I now call the November 2nd, 2021 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Our invocation tonight is going to be given by our Police Chaplain, Brian Evans. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Would you please join me in prayer? Beloved God, as we recognize this month set aside to give thanks, we can be thankful because you are sovereign over all things and you are also good. We thank you for the privilege of living in this great country, state, and city. We ask that you teach us how to maintain the true principles of independence and freedom, both of our country and your kingdom. We thank you for the brave men and women we recognize this month who sacrificed their lives for all we enjoy and embrace. Please put it into our hearts to protect and preserve the rights that our very own founding documents proclaim came from you, the same rights that so many men and women live and die to protect and preserve in our own city and abroad. For that, we honor them in your presence and thank you for them. You indeed know something about sacrificing your son for the sake of others. We ask that our city officials would be just as protective of our rights and take their responsibilities to the residents of our friendship city with the gravity and wisdom they need and deserve. In your word, you promised that if any need wisdom, to simply ask, and you would give it generously. As always, we continue to pray for Mayor Fettie, for our City Manager, Mr. Kramer, Chiefs Raider and Whitaker, and for this assembled council. We thank you for their service and are asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our citizens, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, especially when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before them today, the decisions that must be made. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Erlanger, apart from any personal preferences. It is in the most blessed name of Jesus that I ask these things. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Ms. Elmore.
Present.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Hermes.
Here.
Mr. Doan.
Present.
Mr. Meyer.
Present.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Nicely.
Present.
Mr. Nipper.
Here.
Ms. Reckers.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Thank you. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes from the October 5th, 2021 Regular Council Meeting and October 19th, 2021 Special Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented, Mrs. Kyle, Mrs. Elmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, you've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Mrs. Nicely?
I would like to...
Your microphone, please.
I would like to move to table item number four under legislation, council member reduction to seven members.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to table legislation number four, ordinance council member reduction to seven members. Mr. Hermes?
Seven.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Nicely?
I would like to put something on the record. I wanted to remove the legislation I proposed because it is an important issue. There is no sense for our council to be divided on this issue. After such consideration, I believe overwhelmingly the people of Erlanger want a smaller council. I believe seven is the correct number. I also understand Mrs. Recker's ideas of taking small steps. Lastly, I most of all want to avoid the legal quandary that may ensue if both of the ordinances pass. Thank you.
Mrs. Reckers, did you have your hand raised?
I have not.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We'll go ahead and table. Okay, any other changes or additions to be made to the agenda this evening? Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt the presented, Mrs. Elmore, Mr. Meyer? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started with our special presentation for this evening. We have a fire and EMS presentation. I think our Chief Whitaker is going to present.
I'm confident that none of our firefighters got into this business to win awards. I believe very few of them signed up to be recognized or be patted on the back or become heroes within the community. There's something very intrinsic within each individual that performs this job that spurs our continuance. We all have good days, we all have bad days, but what makes this job so gratifying without outside accolades is knowing you were able to have a positive impact on a negative situation. Folks being recognized tonight will agree, the reward for work well done is the opportunity to do more. That being said, the actions and resulting outcome of this event could not be minimized for preserving the life of an individual must be celebrated. I want to read a letter from Matt Engel, Assistant Superintendent of Erlanger Elsmere Schools, who very eloquently detailed the events in which we recognize this evening. On behalf of the students and staff of Lloyd Memorial High School, as well as the district administrators of the Erlanger Elsmere Independent Schools, I write this letter today expressing our collective thanks and appreciation for the entire Erlanger Fire Department shift from Firehouse One for their timely and exemplary response to Lloyd Memorial High School on September 28th, 2021. Shortly after welcoming local businesses to Lloyd Memorial to explore career opportunities for our senior students, one of our staffers suffered a severe medical emergency and collapsed in one of our office suites. Our school team began rendering critical first aid immediately while also activating district emergency response protocols, as well as the 911 communications with Kenton County Dispatch. The situation was certainly chaotic as school personnel and several school nurses were on scene tending to a variety of injuries. In fact, our Director of Athletics had to administer several shocks from an automated external defibrillator, an AED. The situation was at this point a matter of life and death. Within four minutes of the 911 call to dispatch, both an engine and life squad company from Firehouse One were on scene at Lloyd Memorial. Make no mistake, if not for their swift response and their professional training, this letter I write would conclude in a far different manner. Every member of the Erlanger Fire Department that responded immediately went to work on our staffer. Having been on the scene myself, I recall being immediately grateful for the training that these responders have received over the years, as I am sure every ounce of it was called upon at that moment. The team stabilized their patient, transported the staffer to a local hospital. After a very critical 48 hours, our staffer began showing signs of improvement and by the grace of God, walked out of the hospital within a week of arrival. City administrators, if not for the response of the Erlanger Fire Department on September 28th, Lloyd Memorial High School in our school district would have suffered an incomprehensible tragedy. I assure you, educating our students academically, socially, and emotionally over the last two years has been a Herculean task. The thought of losing a staff member in addition to the day-to-day challenges we already face would have pushed our staff to the brink. Thankfully, because of the good work of the following firefighters, our colleague has another chance at life. I humbly and gratefully request the recognition of the following Erlanger firefighters at your next council meeting for their lifesaving efforts. As Chief, I'm very proud to announce the members that made that run, and I was hopeful that the gentleman was going to be here tonight, and I think we're still waiting on him. But without regard to that, I do want to pay attention to the following firefighter, so I want to come forward. Deputy Chief Brian Robinson. Captain Randy McMullen. Firefighter paramedic Jacob Schaefer. Firefighter EMT Jacob Henderson. Lieutenant Randy Gotsi is not in town, he is out of town, but I always sort of recognize his name. Again, thank you, folks. I get a little choked up. It's in our job, it's what we do, it's what we're paid to do, we love it, but we see a lot on the other side. So, I appreciate the folks that came tonight, I appreciate council in the city for indulging us, letting us pat ourselves on the back. Matt, thank you for such an eloquent letter, and if that gentleman comes, I want to meet him, so please let me know, but thank you all very much.
Wonderful job, and thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda is comments from the public. Mr. Mark Stewart.
Okay, so just like our normal meetings, we are going to have three minutes to speak. What I'm going to do is at three minutes, since we do have a lot of people here, you'll see my microphone turn red at three minutes, I'll give you five to 10 seconds to wrap up, and then the mayor, if it goes over that, the mayor will probably get able to move on to the next one, just so we can get everybody through this evening. We appreciate everybody coming out. Thank you.
All right. So first on the list is Ms. Linda Dietz. The microphone is already on, so you are good to go.
Okay, thank you. I've got a handout to pass out, so don't start my time yet. (Inaudible). Yeah, Ryan, yeah, I'm all right. (Inaudible). Sorry, that was... (Inaudible). I've actually been honored to have lunch with some of them before COVID, so maybe I'll get to have lunch with some of them now that COVID's calmed down, too, so that was fantastic. Okay, I came to talk about the chickens. So I watched the council meeting from last time and the caucus meeting also in October, and Ms. Ryan Elmore helped to address some of these issues before the meeting started. I appreciate that, her coming up to me and talking to me about it, and so I'm still going to address them, but I think I already have the answers to some of these things. One is, when Steve Dunn talked about the fact that the code enforcement officers were saying there's no need to stipulate what it means to keep the chicken coop clean, I have a concern with that being on the code enforcement board, because typically when somebody brings something to the code enforcement board, we take the ordinance, and based on the ordinance is how we do the ruling. So if nothing in there to stipulate that, that makes it kind of, leaves it too iffy, way too iffy. So, you know, it could be example of, you know, no chicken crap around the place, inside the coop, outside the coop, no excessive food, which is going to draw mice and rats and so forth, but I just do think there should be some definitions for some of that in the ordinance, and not just have it play to, you know, to play it out. I wanted to know if you can have it in your front yard, and Ms. Ryan Elmore took care of that for me, you cannot have it so you can see it from the street, public view, so front and side yards are out of, which is good. My one concern is about the stipulation as far as how close it is to the property, other people's property line. There's been a lot of care taken to make sure it's not close to somebody's dwelling, 50 feet from someone's dwelling, but as far as someone's property line, it's my understanding, with Ms. Ryan's help as well, that it only needs to be five feet from the property line, just like any other standard building would be. However, since so much care was taken to make sure this structure with these living creatures in it was 50 feet from a dwelling, which I don't think is the case with any other type of structure, somebody's yard, then I think that the back set for this from a property line should be 10 feet, not five feet. That would just make it easier for people who are going to be up against this, and they could be up against with a few neighbors, to be able to not have it be so close. So the drawing I gave you kind of depicts, because of the 50 feet, not by a dwelling, even the owner, even though they can have it as closer than 50 feet to dwelling, they really can't in an area like where I live on Price Avenue, where the properties are 50 by about 150. So that really restricts them, that they have to have it really quite far back in the yard. And depending on how, the way I drew that was that if a house takes up 30 feet, and I have no idea if that's true or not from front to back, but if you divide the front and the backyard, that allows them 40 feet from the back of their yard, the back of their house, and it just seems like that should be enough room for them to be able to be able to do that with.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz. I appreciate it.
So that was my main concern, is that part.
Okay. Ms. Dietz, your time's up.
All right.
Go to the next one. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Ryan knows my other concerns about the property, as far as somebody adds on to their property, and maybe she can address that, if you add on, if they have to move it, and if a covered porch, screen porch and so forth is included in that thing of considered a dwelling.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I'd appreciate, Ms. Ryan, if you'd bring that up when you get a chance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dietz. All right. Next on the list is Anna Kouts.
My name is Anna Kouts. My husband and all of my children were here, but we're down to one child, because the other two were being a little rambunctious. We have three beautiful children, we moved to Erlanger in 2018 to a little fixer-upper, we're about halfway done with it, and projects just keep mounting up. I am a full-time high school chemistry teacher, graduated NKU, I'm working on a master's in chemistry, and I'm a wife and a mother. Over the summer, I approached a few of the members of council about the ordinance of chickens in our city, and I expressed that I thought it was odd that Erlanger had such strict regulations while cities in our nearby area don't have nearly as strict of regulations. Covington has 100 feet between dwelling places, roosters are allowed there. Edgewood, you have to have at least one acre of land. Fort Thomas, 50 feet with no roosters. Independence, 25 feet. Even the city of Cincinnati only has 25 feet recommendations. I did my own research on the topic, as well as talking to Mr. Doan about, with his background in agriculture and knowing, you know, a lot of those rules and regulations. I'm also a scientist myself and found some really reputable sources with the USDA and the UK College of Agriculture, and have come to my own conclusion that I think it's, you know, plenty safe for people to have backyard chickens. And in the past couple of council meetings, a couple of concerns were brought up, which I don't think are unfounded concerns, but I think that the ordinance that's being proposed is completely common sense and talks about a lot of those concerns and kind of covers them, which I was glad that Linda brought up, you know, some of those little more fine detail things that I didn't know much about, but I think those are, you know, good things worth considering. And lastly, I believe that if we've learned anything over the past 18 months, that our supply chains are constantly being under threat, and I think that we as citizens should be allowed to do what we please with our property as long as we are responsible with our surroundings. So thank you, members of council and Mayor Fettie and all others for listening to the members of your community.
Thank you, Anna. Next on the list is Patty Sudcamp.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Patty Sudcamp, and I reside at 314 Gravesy Avenue. I respectfully ask that these following questions be answered prior to the vote. I think it's very important that the council members realize what the citizens are saying about this consideration. First of all, can you identify one piece of city business that has been affected or delayed by having 12 members? Next, how would you handle five or six task forces with fewer members? Would decreasing the size of city council reduce the viewpoints discussed among the members? Why does this keep coming up? This issue has been voted down three times and once by this current council. In the past, Erlanger has never wanted to be like other cities, ever. We have always been in the forefront. Just because other cities choose to have fewer council members does not mean it would work for us. Why take the chance? Exactly what is the rationale behind this decision? The comment I hear all too often is too many. That's not a reason, it's a conclusion. This one is for Mr. Hermes. Are you trying to reduce the number of council members because of your quote, "The average citizen does not put enough time," I mean, value, on the position of city council to vet 12 candidates? The vast, quote, continues, "The vast majority does not want to know who the candidates are, or what they stand for, or how hard they're willing to work." Does this imply their ignorance, Mr. Hermes? And a final comment, the primary function of having a council is to oversee a yearly budget. Isn't it true that fewer members will negatively impact the critical decision-making process, giving the mayor free rein in spending city funds now and in the future? I think that's all I have to say, but I graciously would respectfully request that I hear from someone to answer... I hear from someone to answer some of these questions, or all, preferably.
Thank you, ma'am.
Citizens, there you have it.
This is Jasper Lucas.
Are we allowed to answer? I know this isn't typically the time we have dialogue, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but I don't want to take up time from--
Yeah, I don't know if--
I don't want to take up time from citizens making comments either.
Yeah, I mean, we can probably talk about it during discussion, but probably more appropriate during the actual legislation.
Okay. Next on the list is Wendy Murphy.
My name is Wendy Murphy and I live in Woodland Hills in Erlanger for 32 years. And I want to ask the council to have mercy when you make this vote about the lady and the chickens. You all have seen the cost of food skyrocket. She has children to feed. It's not bothering her neighbors. They were very happy to receive the eggs that she had to offer. We have an owl that lives in the back of Owl Woods. I have three quarters of an acre. We're not making any overtures to get rid of the owl, and he doesn't lay any eggs. So I'm just asking that you please have mercy on saying a lot of keeper chicken. I'm sure it's more than just an egg-producing animal for, I'm sure it's now become a pet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Georgette Nordlow and I live at 3657 Oxford Court. I just wanted to speak in favor of having the chickens in Erlanger. I'm not here to really talk about all the specific distances and all that, but I think it's a worthwhile thing to do. Edgewood has it and has had it for years. So that tells me no one's unhappy in the city of Edgewood with that plan. So I would support that completely. I would like to talk a little bit about the council member numbers. The city of Cincinnati, as large as it is, has only nine council members. So I don't understand why this would be so difficult to manage the city of Erlanger with representation of nine people. For me personally, as a resident, it's much easier to talk with nine people. I'd rather it be seven, but it's much easier than trying to talk with 12. I would think that's true, too, of all the staff members of the city and the mayor. I'm not sure why 12 was ever arrived at, so I'm happy to, you know, get enlightened with that, but I just really think it would be just more compact, five or six councils positions, I mean, sorry, not council positions, but committees. Seems like nine people should be able to fill five to six committees and the work that's involved there. Some of them might need two people per committee, risking getting by well with one. So that's about all I can think of right now. Wasn't prepared to really talk about the council number, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on the list is Deborah Onsk.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Onsk and I live at 3855 Laura Lane. I grew up in Erlanger. I lived, I grew up on Hallam. My husband and I bought our first house on Jaclyn and we've lived in Brightleaf for 29 years. I'm a proud graduate of Lloyd Memorial High School, as are my children, and I taught for 27 years in Erlanger, so I'm quite invested in the, in the city. My husband and I are opposed to reducing the city council. Erlanger is a diverse city. Citizens have different opinions and different wants and needs. They live in very different types of housing and in different types of neighborhoods. Everyone, everyone should be represented. And we're afraid that the council could easily become a group of very similar members who don't represent all the people. Our current council has people of different ages and different backgrounds who live in different parts of the city. This mix seems to work, as our city has always been successful. It's been stated that when campaigning, candidates have been asked, "Why are there so many people on council?" That really surprised me because my husband and I have walked on campaigns with several council, people running, and we've never, not one time, been asked that. With more members, the council has more people on to do the work, study the issues and be on committees. Reducing the council does not mean everyone would work. Just like any group or committee you're on, some people usually do more than others. This could put, reducing the council could put too much of a workload on a few people. With more people, you have more people to do the work. There's also the issue of a small group taking over and running everything. With more members, this scenario is less likely. Sometimes we vote for 12 members when we're voting and sometimes we don't. We are not lazy and unwilling to vet the candidates. We do vet the candidates and only vote for the ones we think would be good council members. This has been discussed and voted on over and over. Why? What is the motivation for it to keep coming up? It was also stated that candidates did not come to Brightleaf and campaign and meet the citizens. That surprised me, too, because in the 29 years that we have lived there, we have always had candidates come to our door. And we live on the cul-de-sac. I'm sure they come to the, the main drag of Brightleaf because they sure come to Laura. Finally, I just want to urge you to keep the council at 12. Do what's right for this city and let's keep Erlanger at the top like we are now. Thank you so much for your time working on council and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Next on the list is Lucy Riffle.
Matt, you don't have to time me, I won't even be three minutes. You all know my opinion on the council reduction, so I'm not going there. Mrs. Sudcamp knew she would use all of her time, so I am up here on Mrs. Sudcamp's behalf because she would like to thank council for funding the Underpass project. That has been a passion of hers, as you all know, for many, many years. It's coming to fruition, it's looking beautiful. Poor Kara Harper has worked under trying conditions getting this done, and it's beginning to make our city gateway look a lot better. And Patty wanted to thank council and knew she wouldn't have time in her three minutes. As we know, the railroad, no matter how many phone calls we make, was not going to do anything, so thank you all for taking this step.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the list is Corinne Pitts.
Mr. Hermes, you have a history of making false accusations and two weeks ago was no different. I'm not going to dredge up everything you brought up, but most of the accusations were ridiculous. So I would like to make a few statements. We didn't win, anybody on council does not win, a popularity contest to get elected. We all start out new and we work our butts off. We mediate for our residents as well as getting, we got our city through the 2010-2011 housing market crisis. We earned every vote we got. Several times, you've stated that our voters are incapable of vetting 12 people and don't care to put the time in. You've called present and past council members dead weight and basically called our citizens stupid. They vote up for 12, up to 12, like the ballot says. They know exactly what they're, who they're voting for. I have no skin in the game, but I know we will lose our voice if we ever do go down to seven. This is not Congress. People want to serve their community, rich people, poor people, people in the workforce, handicapped people, stay-at-home parents, young and old. If everyone is to knock on 5,000 doors, pay for signs, mailers, fundraisers and digital ads, then all we will get is young, wealthy people who have, probably have political backing. The smaller number is more expensive to get elected and the less diverse our representation will be. As for Independence Council, when this came up one of the 10 other times, I spoke to one of their council members, who's still on council, and I said, "How do you feel? Do you feel that you guys are diversely representing your constituents?" And they said, "No, all of us live within a two-mile radius of each other." Edgewood has seven council members for half the residents we do. Why would we, in a growing, booming city, want to remove our voice and put a huge workload on a small amount of people who get paid next to nothing to do a public service to the residents of our city we love and want to give back to? For the record, 12 has never been the reason for turmoil. The turmoil has always been centered around Mr. Hermes. The other thing I would like to say is, kind of make a comment on is, Cincinnati City Council is probably not a good example. They're kind of a hot mess right now. But the other thing I want to bring up, since I have some time, is I grew up, is about chickens. I grew up in the country. Our neighbors' chickens always flew the coop and ended up in our yard. One day, my dog killed a chicken in our yard. A few weeks later, my dog was shot to death in our yard because the people thought he was a coyote. Anybody that lives on the east side of Erlanger knows the coyotes are a problem over there. We hear them every night and we hear more and more every, every night, when the weather is warm. You want to bring more predators? You have backyard chickens. I moved from the country to the suburbs to have rules. I didn't want to live in the Wild West anymore. I didn't want my dog shot. I didn't want chickens and cattle in my yard, which happened. I don't think it's fair to change the rules in the suburbs for a few people who could just move to the country if they want chickens.
Ms. Pitts, that's your time. Thank you very much.
All right. Get done.
Next on the list is Emily Sayers.
Oh. Okay. That's okay. All right. Next on the list is Doyle Bowling.
I'm Doyle Bowling and I moved to Erlanger in 2017. After about two years here, about 6:00 AM in the morning, I was woke up with these crowing roosters. And this went on day after day. And I even drove, I live at the very end of a cul-de-sac off in Turkeyfoot, and I bought that specific lot because it was further from traffic and less noise. After these chickens were crowing all day long, I drove one day over to, I've got about an acre of woods behind me, to Creekstone, which is near Misty Creek Park. And I identified the house, which was somewhere that had a big tent in the backyard, and they had these chickens back there. This would go on all day long, not just early in the morning, but all day long. And as soon as the chickens started crowing, the dogs would start barking in that same area. I came over here to the city hall and they told me there was an ordinance that you could not have chickens within 500 feet. And I said, "Well, thank God that there's some common sense on the city council." Then I heard yesterday that that ordinance is no longer in effect. I don't know if that's true or not, but I was also told that, that you can have pigs or chickens in a residential neighborhood? Is that true?
That is not true.
It's not true?
No.
But you can't have chickens? Is that the way--
Not yet. That'll be decided today at legislation.
Okay. When is that, when is that session where you can be heard on that? Because I'm totally opposed to that.
That's, that's right now. That's what you're doing right now.
Okay. Well, how does the whole community know about this? There's 18,000 people in Erlanger. How do they know that this is going on tonight?
Every meeting is posted. There's a KRS that specifies when it has to be posted, and this is the third meeting we'll, we'll be talking about chickens this year.
Okay.
Roosters are not allowed in the city of Erlanger.
To me, that would diminish the value of anyone that's going to have a property that someone's going to buy and you have them drive up to the property and you start hearing crowing chickens. I can't imagine they would say, "Well, that's the house I want." I think if anybody wants to know what it's like, you should live next to someone with chickens and see what it's like and listen to that all day long. And I grew up, when I was three and four years old, out in Loveland, and my grandparents had chickens, but we weren't near anybody. So I'm totally opposed to that and, and think that it diminishes, diminishes the value of anyone's home to have someone next door with a chicken coop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment. I am going to give you back the time for the mayor's report so we can move, move along. Mr. Kramer, city administrator's report.
Yes, ma'am. I will be sending out to council an update on foreclosure. I haven't been able to get that to you yet, reference 607 perimeter. So just be looking for that. We would like to start foreclosure on that property. And there's some other things to go along with that, that we're still researching. That is a property we've dealt with last year and it's becoming a problem again, actually a little bit worse than last year now. The only other thing I have is I'd like to add an agenda item to the November caucus, which would be the occupational license fee ordinance. We should have that prepared for council to review at that time. And that's all I have. Anybody have questions? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gatlin.
We have several members, pieces of legislation, I should say, tonight. First is the ordinance, which is for a second reading, which would approve the amended budget. Second is the chickens ordinance, which is again, a second reading. Next, we have the ordinance that would reduce council size from 12 to nine. That also is a second reading. We have a first reading on wage scale. This is, goes along with the paramedic-only job description. It was discussed at the last committee meeting, that there would be the position of paramedic, I'm sorry, fire EMS probationary paramedic and a fire EMS paramedic. Both the municipal order creates that job description and then the pay plan slots in the pay in section K, I'm sorry, not K, in I, in H and I for those paramedic positions. And then finally, we have an appointment to the Board of Adjustments. That's all I have, mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Report on capital projects.
Good evening, mayor, council members, residents. Just want to give a quick report on some of our capital improvement projects that are going on right now. Woodward Avenue, which is being replaced between Birch and Center Street. The section between Birch and Division will be completed this week. We have one area that's been removed and replaced between Center and Division right now. That'll continue on until weather does not permit any longer. Shadyside Drive, moving along rapidly. We have two sections left to tear out and pour back, along with some sidewalk and driveway aprons. So that's a huge improvement to that section of town right there. Lexington Drive is also moving along at a good pace. The section between Concord and the cul-de-sac will be wrapped up next week and then they're probably a third of the way done between Jaclyn and Concord. Flagship Park, the resurfacing project on the playground surface. All of the first course is down, which gives you all the impact retention is down, and they're starting on the color top coat this week. And with the weather that's supposed to be really nice next week, I look for that to probably be wrapped up by the end of next week. Silver Lake Park, we have our first coat of color on the basketball courts, looking fantastic. Once again, they had to postpone the rest of this week because of the cold weather. They'll be back next week, get that second coat on there, get everything striped. They'll be back next week, get that second coat on there, get everything striped, and that whole project will be wrapped up, that first phase. It's looking really, really good. We also had the remainder, remaining two tennis courts striped for pickleball as well. I know we've had a lot of residents ask about that. They've actually gone out and put down blue painter's tape to make their own lines. So with tennis technologies in, during the basketball courts, we had them go ahead and stripe the tennis courts for us, too. We, we did have one bid opening this, this month, was Jefferson, was for Stevenson Road sidewalk, not more or less reconstruction, but repairs. Jefferson Construction was the low bidder on that, at $248,290. So we come in under budget, and I look for that. It could possibly start later on this fall, as long as the weather holds out, but they'll be hitting it hard in the springtime as well. We had a Misty Creek Park ribbon cutting on Friday, October 15th. I wasn't there, I was off sick, but I did see it on your Facebook page. So I know it was a little rainy and wet, but everything looked like it went off without a hitch. So if you get a chance, go to Misty Creek Park, it is wonderful. It's a huge improvement for that neighborhood. And I live back there, there's a lot of new, young families back there, so it's a great addition for all the kids. We are having a public workshop for the Carriage Hill-Northway stormwater issue that we're having. It's an open drainage area, have some concerns from some residents. So we're going to have a public workshop for them, get them together, let them know about our stormwater subsidy, which will really help them out on this. So that's October, November the 17th. We look forward to that. Peter wanted me to mention that Houston Road North is back at 100% with the delineators to try to keep the truck traffic from going down Old Erlanger Road. So we'll see how long those last again this time. Leaf collection has started for the season, they're in their second week. So just remember, get your leaves out to the curb. Your day collection, please try not to park out in front of your house. Hopefully, your neighbors won't either. Makes it a lot easier for our guys. Great, great program for the city. And then we've also, Gary, you'll be interested in this, we've completed the sidewalk project at the bottom of Concord.
I was going to call it out and thank you if you didn't mention it.
Yep. Everything's back, restored. It's a great job by guys done in-house. And that's all I have.
Hey, Ed, what, what time is the public forum on Northway?
It'll be at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM?
Yes.
How are we letting everybody know? Do we want to put it up on social?
We're sending letters out to them.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, awesome.
And I believe our guys, it'll be hand-delivered to all the residents that it's affecting.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ed.
Mayor, I just wanted to make another comment. You know, I appreciate, you know, you're, you guys are very humble with what you did there on Concord. It was a significant break. I think it was about six-plus inches of break in the concrete there, and, you know, made it tough to walk or, you know, get a stroll or anything down, you know, that little stretch. And, and just, I'm thankful to the flexibility with, you know, Mr. Kramer, making, seeing if they had the money, the time to get the work done. It was just a great job. It looks absolutely wonderful. And then the other piece that I just wanted to mention, Mr. Kramer was mentioning before, some of the sidewalk along Narrows, I know that's been talked about, you know, for a long time. Some of that work's getting started. I just wanted to make sure that others that are here, you know, listening, know that that, that is a piece that's been talked about for many, many years. It just took a while to kind of get those things put in place, so.
Oh, of course. I mean, ever since we took over, you know, the sidewalks several years ago, there's a lot out there, and we just keep chipping away, year by year, as much as we can. It's, it'll be a while, but we'll get there eventually.
Thank you. Instead of going through every single department, I'll just let department heads, if you want to come to the podium and give an update, just in the, to be cognizant of your time. We're good? All the reports have gone out to everybody, so unless...
Chief Whitaker, you're, you're not taking the mic?
Gary, come on. All right. Any questions of council members for our department heads from the reports that you all received? Okay. Ms. Rutgers?
I just have one remark. I did a police ride-along last Thursday with Officer Ryle, and it was a pretty amazing experience and very educational. And I just appreciate the work that, that your team does, day in and out. It was, it was awesome, and I encourage anyone who's interested in doing a ride-along to connect with PD and, and look into that opportunity. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. All right. Are there any reports of task forces? Okay. All right. And then we already talked about the Stevenson Road sidewalk bid, and Ed talked about the company that was awarded the bid, Jefferson. Are there any other bids for tonight, Ms. Hoffman? No, ma'am. Okay. All right. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Ms. Jennifer Jasper, Lucas?
I just have a question. I know that, I believe it was Ms. Rutgers that had asked, it might have been at our last council meeting, I can't remember exactly, about a full accounting for summer send-off, and I just wanted to know what the timeframe was. I, I mean, I know that that had just happened when we asked for that, so, or when she asked for it. So obviously, it takes a while for everything to get finished. So I just wanted to get an update on when we might have that.
That was sent out shortly after that. Ms. Rutgers, did I only send that to you? I thought I sent that to council.
I wasn't sure if it was in...
Okay. I do have that, Ms...
I wasn't sure if it was in final, so my apologies.
Ms. Lucas, I'll, I'll send it to you. But I do have that, yes.
I believe you sent it to everybody, so it might be in your inbox. But if not, he'll resend it. Okay. Any other, oh, Ms. Kyle.
Yes. I would like to propose that the city name and dedicate Rainbow Park in honor of Kathy Cahill. Not only did she serve the city on city council and vice mayor for many, many years, but she also was the first community development coordinator for many years. She, she operated all the parks affairs, and it was very interesting, in the summer, you could ride by the parks, and there's Kathy surrounded by all these little kids. Her family always participated, they brought all the stuff out of the car, and it was just awesome. And she was an amazing person, and she dedicated years of service to our cherished city. And I think it's only proper to honor her with naming the park, and I think Rainbow would be a great one. So whatever we need to do, let me know, and I would like to get that started.
Okay. I know that we have talked about this in the past, and we were going to discuss it, or you might, we were going to discuss it with the family.
Right.
Is that...
Yeah, I mean, I, I can.
Are they okay?
I just don't want to upset anybody, because I know the last time I brought it up, there were some tears, and I felt kind of bad, but if you, if you want me to...
That was discussed with the family, and that was their recommendation as well.
Oh, so he already discussed it?
Yeah, they thought that would be the appropriate one to name after.
I mean, if you need any help with anything, let me know, and I'd be glad to help, whatever it takes.
Yeah, I think that's a...
But I think that would be awesome.
I think it's a great idea, and there are actually quite a few improvements that are going to be happening to Rainbow Park within the next, within this fiscal year. So it might be a really good opportunity, once those improvements are done, to have some kind of celebration at the park, to announce the new name, and put some type of memorial there in, with all of the improvements. So I think it's a great idea.
Okay. I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kyle. All right. Any other unfinished business? Okay, any new business? Mr. Hermes?
I would like to ask that we put on the agenda for the caucus meeting to discuss Erlanger being designated Tree City USA.
We'll go ahead and add that. Thank you. Any other new business? Okay. It is time for legislation. Mr. Gatlin?
First, we have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlanger ordinance number 2522, and the budget adopted thereby for the city of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2021, and ending on June 30, 2022. This is, you can see attached is the Google Doc slash Excel spreadsheet of the changes that are being made, struck through is what was in the prior budget, and next to it is what is the current amended budget. This is a second reading.
Okay. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Mr. Meyer? Mrs. Nicely? Any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor. There's just a couple pieces I want to, I want to thank Mr. Kramer and all the work that they've done. There's a piece in here that is the, I think, the final piece for Erlanger to create that community development block grant that will create, that just allows us to disperse the funds to provide utility relief for residents in Erlanger. So I know that's been a long time coming. I believe we're the first city to, to get through that process, but as we head into these, you know, colder winter months, I think it's going to be a great timing to have that there. So thanks for all that work.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. Mrs. Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rutgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion carried.
All right. Next, we have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger to regulate and allow the raising of chickens for personal, family, or home use in residential zones. I'm going to hit the highlights. Number one, it would be lawful to keep or raise up to six chickens in the city for personal, family, or home use. It should be unlawful to use, operate, or maintain any coop, hutch, runway, or enclosure for chickens within 50 feet of any dwelling house. Also, shall be unlawful to raise any roosters in the city. Shall be unlawful to keep the chickens in any type of unsanitary or unclean position. It shall also be unlawful to keep or raise turkeys, guineas, ducks, or geese in any residential zone. This is a second reading.
Okay. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as read? Are you motioning? I'll need a motion first, before we go into discussion. Huh? Motion? Do I have a second? Ms. Rutgers? Okay, now I need discussion. Ms. Elmore?
So I spoke with Ms. Dietz prior to the meeting, and a couple things came up. She wanted some clarification on where the 50 feet would actually start. Would it be a front door? Would it be, if there was a patio or porch? I spoke with Mr. Stewart, and I think we got some clarification that it would be from, like, corner to corner. So where the property, like, where the house is, or the porch ends, that's where you would start the 50 feet. The second was an addition. If you have a chicken coop and your neighbor adds an addition on to their home, would the neighbor with the chicken coop need to move their coop if it falls within that 50 feet? So there's some ask, there's asking on that, and I spoke with Mr. Stewart, and he believes, it was 100%, but he believes that it would be grandfathered in. Is that correct?
It, it would be slightly, I mean, I don't know if there's any official law on that, but that would be the appropriate thing, if, if the chicken coop was there, unless Jack corrects me on that.
I agree. I think if, I, I think, I think the idea is notice, right? So the notice is, you need to put your chicken coop up 50 feet away from your neighbor. So if your neighbor then adds on to their home, I don't think that would require you to move your chicken coop.
Okay. And then if there is an odor or cleanliness, that would fall under the animal ordinance that we have, because they're technically considered a pet, correct?
It would fall under both, because this specifies the odor, and we also have one. So if, if a resident doesn't clean their backyards from their dogs, that's the same issue as if there would be chickens. So it would be handled the same.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Kyle?
Yes, I wanted to answer Ms. Nordlow's question about Edgewood, and I believe that they have a lot more HOAs in Edgewood than we do in Erlanger. And also, they have some more, like rural settings in Edgewood, too. And you can see some of them from 275. But saying that, HOAs have regulations against chickens, and rightly so. Y'all know that I raise chickens. I'm not going to tell you all my stories again, but I think that if you have 10 feet from the property line, there are a lot of houses in Erlanger that have gazebos in their backyard. Now, if they're sitting on their gazebo, and I'm only 10 feet away from them, I don't think it's going to be a pleasant experience. And also, speaking about barking dogs, we always see problems with barking dogs over and over again. If you have chickens in your backyard, I guarantee my dog can be 100 feet from them, and she'll start barking because she knows they're there. She smells them. And, because she even starts barking if another dog comes out, or whines, or whatever. So I, I think that's going to be a problem. So that these, and, and the other thing is, too, today was one of those days when I was on the phone, computer, getting messages, emails, nonstop. Everybody that contacted me was against the chickens. And I've always said I'm the voice of the people that have elected me, and in conscience, I have to go by that. So I've had a lot more people call me against the chickens than for. So I just want people to know why I'm voting against it. Thank you.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
I'm going to, again, echo some things Ms. Kyle said. I've had a lot of people contact me against, more against than for, and I, I kind of want to explain my, my no vote, because I, I feel like I should just preface that. I really do respect the desire to provide for your family and be self-sufficient. I, I really agree with Ms., I believe it's Ms. Cots, I don't want to mispronounce your name. But I really do agree with that. I'm just not convinced that Erlanger's the best place for it. I think there are other cities that allow them for good reason, and I just don't feel like, I, I feel like the consensus that I hear from residents is, this is not the place for them. So my vote's going to be no on that.
Any other discussion? Okay. Ms. Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
No.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Doan?
Yes.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rutgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
No, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right. Next, we have an ordinance to the city of Erlanger to change the number of city council members from 12 members to nine members. The only change is what can be seen as underlined, or I'm sorry, struck through, which is we're taking it from 12 to nine, and this would not be effective until the November 2022 election. So it'd be the 2023 council would be the first time that this would take place.
Okay. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Mrs. Rutgers? Mrs. Nicely? Any discussion? Mrs. Kyle?
Yes. Again, someone asked this evening, I forgot which resident, I'm sorry, but they were wondering when we started with the 12 council members. Erlanger didn't have a city council mayor government until 1949, and then in the late '50s, our population grew by 91%. When that happened, they decided to up the council numbers to 12, because we were growing at a rapid pace. And that's when the middle of Erlanger was all built. Those houses all were built in the '50s and the '60s. Okay, so from there, from that point until today, we've almost doubled our population. And so we've got almost 20,000 people. And so we've got almost 20,000 people. And I like the diversity of the 12, I think I've mentioned that before, sharing the workload, that was a good comment that somebody made tonight. We've got five to six task forces. And it takes a lot of people, a lot of hours to work those. And if you lower your number, you're still gonna have the slackers that won't sign up for the task forces. And then there, we're gonna have a few people doing all the work. It avoids a small group from just taking over and getting their ideas pushed through. And then there's, the majority of citizens, again, that flooded me today, were all for the 12. I had one person say they were okay with nine. I did not have a soul call me, well, we don't have to worry about seven. But anyway, everybody that notified me was for the 12. So again, I have to vote according to what I have received from the citizens. So that's why I'll be voting no.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Jasper Lucas?
I want to address Ms. Sedcamp's questions. I think your question about why it keeps coming up is an excellent one. And I don't know why it keeps coming up. This is the second time in the, in this year that it's come up. And I'll be done discussing it after tonight for quite a while. I just, I just won't be discussing it again. So I don't know why it's coming up. I think that question would have to be directed, obviously, to the people who have proposed it. You asked if, about city business that, and I didn't jot the whole question down, I think you said, you know, is there any city business that would have been decided differently had it been fewer? In my year, I'm not sure that there would have been. And then would it still be as diverse with fewer members? I think we would still have the opportunity for diversity with nine. With seven, I don't think we would have as much opportunity for diversity. And it's been said before, you know, a larger number doesn't necessarily guarantee diversity, but it does provide more opportunity for that. So I am supporting nine. I shared a lot of my reasons during the last meeting. I'm not gonna rehash all of those again. But I am not supportive of anything less than nine. And if nine doesn't pass, I will not be proposing that we discuss it again for quite a while. I think we've spent way more time than necessary on this, and I think there's a lot more important things in the city that need to be discussed than reduction of council. I think that answers all of your questions. If there's not some, if there's something else, feel free to ask me.
Mr. Meyer?
No, I, I just wanted to comment. The, the question was, why does this keep coming up? I was the one that brought it up, I think, in January. I, I did so because during the council candidate forum last year, there were, you know, seven-plus members that had, at that point, indicated that they support that reduction. So I thought, okay, well, let's just jump out of the gate and do it. It did not make it to the agenda. And, and I agreed not to, you know, talk about it for at least six months, and I did not bring it up this time. So that, that is one of the reasons why it was. I just wanted to make sure that people understood what happened then.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Nicely?
I just wanted to thank all the residents that have reached out to me in the reduction of council. Most of them that reached out to me wanted seven, some wanted nine. And I appreciated everybody, I got back with everybody as, as soon as I could. And I appreciate all the input, and it wasn't an easy decision, but I will be supporting the reduction to nine.
Ms. Skidmore?
I had quite a few citizens contact me, and they weren't even really, the ones that I talked to weren't even really happy with going down to nine. But, you know, sometimes you just gotta take the good with the bad, but I think this is not gonna be part of the good. But I'm trying to honor what the citizens want, and that's what I want. I don't want, I don't want a reduction.
All right. Okay. Ms. Hoffman, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, excuse me, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore? Mr. Hermes?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore? Ms. Elmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rutgers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Doan?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right, next, we have an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the pay plan to include the position of fire EMS probationary paramedic and fire EMS paramedic. You can see, as I said earlier, in section H is adding the fire EMS paramedic to the H pay band, and under I, the fire EMS probationary paramedic to the I pay band. This is a first reading.
All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in the minutes, the first reading of this ordinance, please.
Next, we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending the city of Erlanger personnel policies related to job descriptions, creating the positions of fire EMS paramedic and fire EMS probationary paramedic. Incorporated within this municipal order is the attached job description, which outlines all of the job descriptions, skills, and requirements for the two positions that are being created. This does require a vote.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mrs. Elmore? Mrs. Jasper Lucas? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
All right, last, we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the appointment of Emily Sayers as a member of the Board of Adjustment for the city of Erlanger to fill the vacancy there and resulting from the resignation of James Molly. James Molly, this term will begin on November 2, 2021, and continue until the first Monday in January 2022.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mrs. Elmore? Mr. Hermes? Any discussion?